Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's Linden Board of Education meeting. I ask for you to all stand and rise for the pledge.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as follows. On January 10th and September 13th, 2023, notice was sent to the Home News Tribune, Star Ledger, Union County Local Source, Tap into, and the Clerk of Municipality. By state law, there is no smoking permitted in this building at any time. In addition to the listed items in this agenda, this Board of Education may discuss and act upon other items not specifically referred to herein as is allowed as the regularly scheduled meeting, board meeting, under the Sunshine Law. Roll call.
Ms. Centron.
Present.
Mr. Dela Cruz.
Here.
Mrs. Fleming.
Present.
Ms. Pino.
Present.
Ms. Rosada-Casada.
Present.
Ms. Thomas.
Present.
Ms. Armstead.
Ms. Carrillo.
Present.
Dr. Berghammer.
Present.
I'd like to ask for a motion for approval of minutes.
Motion to approve minutes.
Second. Back up. Roll call.
Ms. Centron.
Yes.
Mr. Dela Cruz.
Yes.
Mrs. Fleming.
Same.
Ms. Pino.
Yes.
Ms. Rosada-Casada.
Yes.
Ms. Carrillo.
Yes.
Ms. Thomas.
Yes.
And Dr. Berghammer.
Yes.
At this time, we are going to move forward with comments from the public. Members of the public desiring to make a public comment may come forward at this time. For those watching online, if you wish to make a comment or ask a question, please utilize the raise your hand feature on the online meeting platform. Please begin your comments by stating your name and address, as well as listing it at the podium. Individuals are invited to speak on one topic at a time, and no individual will speak more than once until all individuals so desiring have spoken once. The public is reminded that to ensure the efficient and orderly operations of the meeting, members of the public will be limited to speaking on agenda items for three minutes.
Good evening. Tanya Grissette, 422 Southwood Avenue. I know it's just a typo on page 75. 1215 should be Vendor Craft Fair, not Far. But I was also wondering if there was going to be any clarification on education report item seven. It's about three, four pages. Bilingual evaluations, related services, just some clarification on what that entails because the fee is totaled up to well over $25,000. So is it our bilingual program that's being evaluated? Is it the staff, faculty? So that was just a question. I didn't know if there would be any discussion about that this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
For that item, that is for our special education students. Each month, they have to go through different levels of evaluation, so it is tied to that department.
At this time, we'll move on with the superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome officially to the start of the school year. We have begun, we are closing out on the month of September, and I want to thank all of the faculty and staff and the students for returning back to school. As we continue to honor student attendance daily, we are pleased to report that we have over a 94% attendance rate. Tomorrow will be the 16th day of school, and we currently have 6,436 students on our roster. Tonight, on our personnel report, we are deeply saddened to learn of deaths of three past employees, starting with Stella Cardella. She worked for the Linden Board of Education, starting in 1991. She was a secretary for the Business and Purchasing Department at the Administration Building for over 25 years, and she retired in 2017. Secondly, Deborah Zager. She started working for the Linden Board of Education in 2000. Ms. Zager was a special education resource teacher at Linden High School for over 19 years, until her retirement in 2019. Lastly, we have Ms. Elaine Volpe. She started working in the Linden Board of Education in 1977. Ms. Volpe taught second grade and was a literacy teacher at School Number Nine for over 28 years until her retirement in 2005. And I started her name with Ms. Volpe because I had Ms. Volpe in 1981 in second grade. So again, I'd like to just offer my condolences to all of the families for those that we lost, and please know that you are in our thoughts and prayers. Now, I'd like to acknowledge that we have a few retirements on the agenda for tonight, starting with Maria Barbosa. She began working with us in 2006 as a part-time aide. She's been working for 16 years at School Numbers Five and Two. She plans to retire in January of 2024. Secondly, we have Ruth Radies, who started in 2015 as a part-time aide. She's worked for over six years at School Number Ten and One, and she retired in August. So thank you for your passion and dedication, support here for the Linden Public Schools, and as always, anyone that is planning to retire, I wish you the best on the next phase of your lives. So to our current families, I'd like to remind you how crucial it is that you understand that the Free and Reduced Lunch Program begins every year in October. Applications must be completed by October 20th. I'm pleased to announce that last two weeks ago, one of our outreach programs for parents under the World Language Multi-Learners Department, we had over 80 families come out on a Saturday, and we provided support for them to fill out the online lunch application. At back-to-school night, we had staff members come in, and we had a great return rate with helping and assisting families, again, fill out the online application. What does that tell us? If you need our help, we are here for you. The online application is found on our website under Parent Resources. You click on to Food Services, it is there. I had asked our accountant, where do we stand with the applications that are still open? And the biggest concern is, is that they're not being completed by adding on the income. So please, if you have not received a response from your application, please call in. You can call any of the schools. You can call the Board of Education, and we are here to help you walk through to make sure that you fill out the Free and Reduced application. I'd like to also remind everyone to please continue going on to our website. Each school sends out information weekly, monthly, to communicate with those schools. But right on the first page of our website is our district calendar, and it outlines everything that's going on in the district. We just closed out our back-to-school night last night. Linden High School was the last one. We received so much positive feedback in regards to that, but more importantly, it is on our website is another layer to be able to communicate with you all. And the best feature of all that we have this year is that you can click on the button for the website to be translated into Spanish, Haitian Creole, Polish, or Arabic. So we are here to continue to build our partnerships, and our website is the best place so you can learn where we're at, and more importantly, where we're going, and inviting you to attend those events as well. Also, at the back-to-school nights, it was a pleasure to see all of our PTAs there, so big thank you to our PTAs and also to our PTOs. We see the tireless effort that you put in to ensure that we are beginning to strengthen those partnerships because PTO/PTA is Parent Teacher Organization or Association. Back-to-school nights is one of the nights where they get a large number of parents signing up, but it's not enough. Flyers continue to go home to eat from each school, asking for you to sign up for PTAs or PTOs, but more importantly, to show up to the events. They need help. We need help. And so please, again, thank you to our PTAs and PTOs presidents and the executive boards, but again, it's the partnership that means every parent. We have over 6,000 students in our district, and we are looking forward to grow. In order for us to be successful, we need you. Research has shown that family-school engagement leads to improved student outcomes and well-being. However, in today's age of 2023, it is clear that there are systemic barriers that are often getting in the way of effective partnerships. As I just stated with the back-to-school nights, as well as PTAs and PTOs, we had a great turnout of parents and guardians coming. But we also need to ensure that we are having continuous partnerships. So one of the things that I want to encourage you all is, as you see on tonight's agenda, we have a parent-university session, one of many, that will be parents to learn how to support their children with youth anxiety. So please, on our website, under Student Services, which is in the Department section, it gives resources for parents to know how to support your child, but more importantly, it shares the events that we have going on, from our social workers, counselors, and just mental health support. I recently shared in a superintendent's message online that we are now in the process of edmentum testing, which is an online diagnostic test that's done three times a year for students in grades one through 12. We conduct the course, I'm sorry, we conduct the assessment for language, arts, and math to learn how students are on their proficiency levels, and then they receive targeted instruction called a learning path. So please continue to have your students there on time to complete the edmentum assessments. This is just one of the multiple measures that we use to assess our students. We call it formative assessments because it takes place throughout the school year. Summitive assessments, such as New Jersey SLA or those standardized testings, that's done once a year. But we receive and we take very, very a lot of pride in ensuring that we have multiple measures to identify our students and how to support them through enrichment, as well as through tutoring. Speaking of the standardized assessment, individual student reports for the Spring 2022 New Jersey SLA and Dynamic Learning Maps have arrived in the district, and they're being mailed out to homes, and we will make sure they're out before October 12th. Your child's ISR will indicate how they did in the areas of language, arts, math, and in science, grades five, eight, and 11. If you have any questions about how your child did on those assessments, please contact your child's principal. I'd like to congratulate Schools Four, Five, Six, and Ten for being recognized for Safe Routes to Schools program in conjunction with the Linden Police Department. They've been working actively to promote student bike safety and walking to school. It helps support physical health, mental health, and more importantly, just an opportunity to do something different than being on a phone or on a video game. So congratulations to those schools. It was great to be at that event yesterday. I'd like to remind everyone, as we are moving into October, the next few days, great things are happening. First, I'd like to acknowledge that it is National Principals Month, and I want to just start right now and say a big shout-out to all of our principals in our district for the job that you are doing. October, we are also going to be celebrating National Bullying Prevention Month, where schools will be conducting different forms of activity, activities, to teach and educate our children on not being an innocent bystander, but understanding the importance of kindness through communication in your actions. Fire Prevention Month is kicking off. We are continuing with Spanish Heritage Month that ends on October 15th, and we are welcoming Polish-American Heritage Month. And I am excited to congratulate, what I just learned was that in the Polish community, they have a Miss Polonia, and two of our students have been recognized as Miss Polonia, 12th grader Sonia Mate, and then Little Miss Polonia is 3rd grade Olivia Dubinsky. They will be representing the City of Linden at the upcoming Sunday 86th Annual Pulaski Day Parade in New York City. Again, parents and guardians, we communicate through our blackboard. You receive messages through cell phone, as well as in your emails. We need your help. ESSA stands for Every Student Succeeds Act, and it's a stakeholder survey that we sent out a couple of days ago that we need to hear from you. So please complete that survey. It will help us to continue to support our students. Now, at this time, I am going to turn it over to our Assistant Superintendent for Academics, I mean for Support, Ms. Lewis. She is going to be speaking to our Keene Scholars Program, and it's a pleasure to see Mr. Lester here from Keene, and also a new initiative that the Board of Education has put together called It Takes a Village, where we will be recognizing students and community members, and it is a pleasure to welcome Mayor Armstead, who's here this evening, who will be helping us kick this off. So thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Perkins. Thank you, Mrs. Perkins. We are thrilled to continue our partnership with Kane University with a addition to our Kane Scholar Academy. The Kane Scholar Academy is a partnership that we formed with Kane University, where we have select high school students who participate in a very rigorous course load, where they take high school courses and college-level courses at the same time while fulfilling their graduate, high school graduation requirements. So we are thrilled and excited to have a new addition to our Cohort Two for this school year, and so we look forward to seeing all of the great things that she's going to do during the course of her high school career, while she's earning college-level credits, which is an amazing accomplishment. So I'd like to now call up Mr. Jason Lester, who's our representative from Kane University, who will welcome her and congratulate her.
Good evening. I'm Jason Lester. I'm the Special Assistant to the President, as well as the Executive Director to the Kane Scholar Academy.
Could you speak into the mic, please?
Can we adjust that for him?
It twirls.
I'm pleased to be here. I don't want to adjust it too much.
Or you could take it off. Take it off.
Okay.
It comes right off.
I don't know if you want to give me a microphone. I'm just pleased to be here back in Linden again. I was here this summer. One of our young people wasn't able to be here, but she's here now. Well, let me call Andrea Rivas-Rosado up. She's my latest addition to KSA. We're proud to have you. It's been a little rough getting things done. I've got a whole bunch of things going on at the university with my technology, yada, 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 all that good stuff, but she's with us now. She's enrolled in her classes. She's ready to rock and roll, but I came here bringing gifts. So let me get a few of these things off. Well, first, let me give you your letter. Take a peek at that when you get it home. I want you to frame it because that's your ticket once you successfully complete Kane Scholar Academy. You don't have to fill out an application to go anywhere because you're already accepted in the Kane University. Two, please take this empty laptop case. The laptop will be in it on Monday when you bring it back. Unfortunately, my guys down at OSIS, which is our technology department, they weren't able to image your computer at this point in time. Some things going on, but you'll have that ready to rock and roll. Now, I told you I brought some gifts, right? In your bag, you have a hydration device. We'll put that right there. You have your autographed KSA Emboldened Journal. I autographed it myself. You have a lovely stress ball. You can expect a lot of that. And this pretty snazzy bookbag that you young people like to wear nowadays. You also got your cougar pride. I didn't know which color you liked, so I got them in. I also have your KSA Kane Scholar gear back at my office. Unfortunately, you don't look like a double XL, so I didn't, you know, I didn't want to embarrass myself. But you know, we're happy to have you. We look forward to you doing great things with the academy. I know you're going to make not only Linden proud, your parents proud, but you're going to do great things for the university, and the president does send his regards. He wishes he could be, he likes to be here more than I do. So welcome aboard. We look forward to working with you, your family, the entire team of Linden. Keep up the great work. We're proud of you.
Excuse me, Mr. Lester. If I can just ask, if I can just ask for Mr. Lester, Andrea, and the family to take a photo. Thank you.
I love photos.
Over here?
Yes.
Right, right, right over here.
Do I have to be in the board?
Yes.
You could take the second one.
And you feel crunchy.
I don't know, my throat is scratchy.
Don't you cave. Don't you cave.
Okay.
You should, you should go.
I have a pencil.
I didn't get a pen.
I got a pencil.
Do you have?
No, get it from, um...
I have one. Do you need one?
Anytime.
Tap him, tap him, tap him, tap him.
Next time, sharpen it, okay? Next time, sharpen it. Sharpen it.
Congratulations again to Andrea and her family. We are so proud of you and cannot wait to hear about all the amazing things we're going to do. The next topic, I am again thrilled to be a part of a new initiative of the Board of Education called the It Takes a Village Award. And in the title, the title in and of itself really speaks to a key premise of education, that it takes a village to raise the next generation of our leaders, our future leaders of our nation. So we are thrilled to have this It Takes a Village Award, where we will be recognizing students, community stakeholders, as well as staff members throughout our district. I am going to now turn it over to our Honorable Mayor Armstead, as well as Dr. Berghammer, our board president.
I'm going to let Dr. Berghammer start off because she's a little more knowledgeable because it's actually her idea. I don't want to steal her thunder.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, everyone, and welcome. I want to introduce our new initiative, It Takes a Village Award. Each month, the Board of Education and the City of Linden will partner to recognize a school employee, a parent, or community member, and two students who go the extra mile and are doing great things to bring our district and community together. In today's world, we all live in a silo. Many of us do not even know the name of our next-door neighbor. We are trying to change things. The time has come for us to build a bridge between our children, our parents, and the community. This is why the Linden School, the Linden Board of Education has created the It Takes a Village Award. We have, we have all heard the saying, "A family that prays together, live well together." I would add to that by saying, "A community that talks with each other and respects each other do not fight with each other." We now ask the Mayor of Linden and the Superintendent of School to say a brief word.
Well, I'm going to say a brief word. I guess, given, and that's very unusual because I'm very long-winded, but given the events that have happened in the last few weeks, and I'm sure some of you have seen the videos, it was not a very pleasant sight, and it's gut-wrenching when you see our children at each other's throats, sometimes for no apparent reason, other than they saw something on Facebook, or somebody said something or insulted them in a very small way, because all these things are very small that are happening. But when it escalates to a point that violence is the answer, then we know we have a problem. Okay, so how do you avoid that? The best way to avoid that is become more involved, and we have to talk to our children. And I'm of the opinion that It Takes a Village Award has come at precisely, I think, the right time. It couldn't come at a better time. I commend Dr. Berghammer for bringing the idea forth to the city and to the Board of Education, and let's, let's do that. Let's start looking at each other, look at things that, we're a village, we are a village, a very diverse village, and I think if we all come together and try to figure out what's going on, talk to our children, and let them know that violence is not the answer, and there are consequences for violence. See, right now, some of our children are 15, 16, and 17, and right now, so you'll get a slap on the wrist if you do something if you're underage. But a year goes by, you turn 18, it's a whole different ballgame. The law and the judicial system will look at you a different way, so, and they will treat you differently. So it's best that we do everything humanly possible to get our arms wrapped around any situation that will wind up looking like what happened at the gas station across from, the Safeway across from the school. It's best that we try to get our arms around it, address it as best we can, and to me, talking to our children and trying to figure out what's going on in their minds is the answer, and giving them encouragement for doing well, and having parents who are involved does encourage them. See, sometimes I feel like, right now, I might be preaching to the choir. Okay, because some of the, some of the parents who are here, it may not be your children who are involved in this, but I think we have to start somewhere, and we have to let people know in this town that we are here as one community, and the only way we're ever going to move forward is to understand that we're one community. So with that being said, I told you I'm long-winded.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Dr. Berghammer. When I think of, when Dr. Berghammer brought this initiative to me, I had a visual. And when I think of It Takes a Village, I hope you can relate to my visual when I say these words. We are here to establish unbreakable bonds and unstoppable, unstoppable progress for our students. Unbreakable bonds and unstoppable progress for our students. And in order to do that, we need the village. We all know that education does not just take place inside the school. I tell my children every day, they are a product of my household, regardless if they are in a building of a school or if they are in the streets. But it's when they're in those other spaces without me, it's the village that we expect them to come together. So please, thank you for bringing us together in this moment for 2023, where we partner with our city. We see our mayor throughout our schools. We see our mayor through all of the city events. But here at the Board of Education meeting, we are uniting that we get to recognize students and staff, as well as community members who help shape our students. So thank you for the commitment to serve children and our school system. So we have four awards. And what we did was, our first award goes to a staff member.
Before you give her the award, I don't want to take the credit for this. I'm sorry. I apologize to my board members. I didn't do this all by myself. As a team, we created this award together. And if I take the credit all by myself, I am not appreciating the work of the team. We did it all together. We are all in this together.
No, you're not sorry. You are right, all right? That's correct. So thank you. So the first award where we looked at what are the attributes of someone who's committed, they're dedicated, they show up. You don't have to ask, they ask you. And I am going to call up the first person who I have the pleasure of working with daily. This did not come from me. This award goes to Donna Popoff. The Board, the Board of Education members. When, a couple of weeks ago, Ms. Popoff sits here at this meeting before we arrive, she sets up everything for our Board of Education committee meetings, our work session, and now tonight. And it was the board members who said, we need to recognize Donna. That's right. For your commitment. That's right, Donna. So thank you.
Can we read what the award says?
The award says, "It takes a village in recognition of ongoing commitment, dedication and service for strengthening partnerships in the Linden Public Schools District." Our second award goes to a community member who also shows up as a parent and also just a service worker. I've met this person when I was serving as principal at McManus, and she was my PTA president. And then she moved on to Linden High School, and she serves as the PTA president as well. So Donna Hernandez, please come on up. And thank you for what you do. We see your and hear your advocacy for all children. Yes, okay. And so now, we will recognize a student on the elementary level, as well as the secondary level. And we had asked our principals to provide names. And as a committee, we went through those names and two students were selected. So at this time, I would like to call up Bill Mastriano, Mr. Mastriano, Principal of School Number Six. And also, for the secondary level, Ms. Campbell, Vice Principal Ms. Campbell. And they will speak to the students that are being recognized this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Perkins. Good evening, everybody. Board of Education, Mayor Armstead. I don't think I've ever been in a room with this many important people right now. Actually, but the most important people are our community members sitting here in the chairs. I see our football team, our elementary school students, our middle school students. This is what we're really here for. And it's just a pleasure and an honor to be here before you to honor one of our students here at fantastic School Number Six. So it is my privilege and honor to present the September It Takes a Village Student Award, given to School Six, fourth grade student, Mr. Jaden Erace. I just want to tell you a little bit about Jaden. Every single, ooh, is this working? Hold on, we're good, we're good. Every single morning at School Number Six, we say our mission statement, and we, we say that we're going to lead our own education. And that means to lend a helping hand, encourage excellence, achieve through teamwork, and discover and embrace our diversity. And Jaden is exemplary when it comes to this. He's been recognized by School Six students, staff, as a responsible role model and a friend to all. Last school year, Jaden, all by himself, took on a leadership role, volunteering to help the bus driver and the aides. Jaden works hard to ensure the safety and security of his little brother Josiah and the rest of the bus students at School Six. His duty is included, but not limited to, helping with attendance, seat assignments and overall bus safety. He always made sure everyone's seatbelts were buckled. This is a daily routine that continues to this day, I promise you that. Jaden is a caring personality that is respected by his peers. At School Six, Jaden is responsible for showing new students around and helping them become familiar with the building. He's counted on to make deliveries to the cafeteria, the main office, the nurse's office, anywhere in this school. He knows everywhere there is to go and makes everyone feel welcome. He contributes to the classroom lessons and is always up for a challenge. Jaden is also considered an expert, taking the time to assist his classmates once his work is complete. Overall, I am proud to say Jaden Erace is a hard-working student who consistently demonstrates a positive attitude towards learning, follows classroom rules, he's respectful of his teachers and his peers, and he exceeds my expectations each and every day. And I want to congratulate you, Jaden.
Congratulations. All right. You are who you are, and we're just very proud of you. And more importantly, we take pleasure in being able to acknowledge the work that you do. And now I'll turn it over to Ms. Campbell.
Thank you, guys. Leila, come up here. I am extremely grateful to present this award because when I was a teacher, I led a program called The Peer Pals with Mr. Devaney, and Leila was one of our first students to be a part of that. She led multiple discussions with our Allen, Texas, students, and she is a true, true leader in our community. So, Leila Soto is one of our impressive 12th grade seniors at LHS. She is currently number one in her class. Leila is the second-in-command Executive Officer of our LHS NJ ROTC. She has participated in several impressive programs, including the Jersey Girl State at Georgian Court University, where she spent a week learning about the election process. Leila also went to the Naval Academy Summer Seminar and was a cadet leader at the NJ ROTC Area Number Four Leadership Academy in Newport, Rhode Island. This past summer, Leila attended the Youth Leader Summit in California. She also is a member of the LHS Varsity Wrestling Team and has wrestled, go ahead, that's right, and has wrestled in states multiple times. Leila is currently placed sixth in our state. In addition to her engagement with numerous extracurricular activities, Leila also has an impressive academic history and carries a rigorous course load with being enrolled in AP and IB courses, and has maintained straight A's throughout her entire high school career.
My girl, you deserve this. You know, we met, we met last year at the Board of Education when we recognized you for your athleticism. But tonight, we get to see the whole you, and we are just so very proud for what you're doing in the classroom and out of the classroom. So congratulations for being you and doing the thing, all right? Keep it up. So now, at this time, may we all come over to the backdrop and we'll take a picture. Yeah, because they got the family members going. You can't go. You gotta get up there, Tony. I need something. My throat hurts. I got something in my, what is this? I need something. My throat hurts. I got something in my, what is this? Okay, all right. You want to have some? You heard me. Can I run to the bathroom first? I can run to the bathroom, right? At this time, if there is any family members from the recipients that would like to come up to the microphone, you may do so.
Hey, Ms. Erica, three minutes.
Okay, good evening. I would first like to thank the Superintendent and all board members for honoring my mom It truly shows that her efforts are seen and appreciated. To say the least, my mom was PTA Vice President at School Nine for about six years, President at McManus for five years, and is currently the President at LHS for the past five years. She's missed birthdays, anniversaries and other holidays for all students.
Wow.
She doesn't do this for herself, but all students in district. If there's any event, she finds a way to be there. She has a full-time job, is a mother to two daughters, and is also a wife. All of that, and she makes time for anything, being at sporting events, fundraisers, other events as well, and not just supporting LHS, but every single school in this district. My mom is one that will even stay until everyone leaves to make sure that all students have a ride home. As this is my last year in Linden, since I'm a senior, I can tell you that there is big shoes that need to be filled. But even though I am gone, I know for a fact you will still see her at events because she cares for every single student in this town and not just her own children. My mom, my mom doesn't have two kids, but thousands, as she considers all's to be hers. Thank you again, and I'm so thankful for everything you do.
And this will conclude my superintendent's report. Before I turn it back over to the board, I'd like to inform everyone that we have a walk-on item for personnel and that the, it is in the hands of the board members who will also vote on the walk-on. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Perkins. We will now move on to the education report.
Good evening. The Education Committee, upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and Assistant Superintendent, presents the following motions of Linden Board of Education for approval. I approve Item 1 through 46.
46. I respectfully ask for a second. Second.
Ms. Intron. Mr. Dela Cruz.
Yes.
Mrs. Fleming.
Yes.
Ms. Pino.
Yes.
Ms. Rosada Quezada.
Yes.
Ms. Carrillo.
Yes.
Ms. Thomas.
Yes.
And Dr. Berghammer.
Yes.
Moving along to the personnel report.
The Personnel Committee, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, presents the following motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval. All appointments and reappointments are contingent upon and may be modified based on student participation and the district receipt of sufficient school state aid and other revenue funding. I approve Items 1 through 46, including the... I approve Items 1 through 46, including the walk-on of 47 and 48, and I respectfully ask for a second.
Second. Roll call.
Ms. Centron.
Yes.
Mr. Dela Cruz.
Yes.
Mrs. Fleming.
Yes.
Ms. Pino.
Yes.
Ms. Rosada-Casada.
Yes.
Ms. Carrillo.
Yes.
Ms. Thomas.
Yes.
And Dr. Burghammer.
Yes.
Congratulations to all of the new hires. At this time, if there's anyone from the administrators who would like to come up to the podium to speak about your appointment, your leadership role, please do so at this time.
Ms. Apalinski.
I'm back.
Hi, Ms. Crawley.
Ms. Crawley, it's so good to see you again.
Thank you.
I never get enough of looking and hearing from you. Welcome.
Thank you so much. To the prestigious board members, Superintendent Perkins, Assistant Superintendent Lewis, and Assistant Superintendent Olivera, thank you, thank you, thank you for giving me the opportunity to stand before you as the appointed principal of School Number Five. When I think about the little girl who grew up across the tracks, who loved going to school, loved to learn, appreciated the connections that she made with her educators, it is truly a dream come true to now lead and be a role model for the students at School Number Five. I have walked in their shoes and look forward to guiding them throughout their elementary school journey. To the School Number Five community, thank you for welcoming me with open arms. In the time I have spent with you, I have seen your commitment to following my vision to maximize student achievement and create a positive school culture and climate that celebrates student diversity. I truly value the relationships I have already began to form with so many of you, and I have enjoyed learning from you, collaborating with you, and look forward to continuing our partnership and all of the amazing things in store for our children. To my family, thank you for being my rock. You push me to be the best version of myself every day. I would not be here if it were not for you. Your support, advice, and guidance is my saving grace, and I hope I continue to make you proud. Once again, thank you for this opportunity. I truly look forward to making dreams come alive at School Number Five.
Clearly, we got the same memo.
Yes.
Good evening. I'm honored to be here this evening and would like to take the opportunity to share a little bit about myself and our work in the Science Department and express my deep gratitude. So, first, deep congratulations to my fellow appointees this evening, Dani Rochelle and Ms. Cabrera, our new teachers, custodians, and the support staff. Welcome to LPS. Welcome to a brand-new, exciting career. My story begins with my family, both sides, Mom and Dad, moving to Linden about 100 years ago. As a lifelong resident of Linden myself and proud homeowner in the Eighth Ward, I graduated from School Nine, McManus, LHS, Seton Hall University, and its School of Law. But shortly after that, passing the bar, I decided I didn't want to do that, and I realized my passion was actually education. And I enrolled at Kane University-- so, go Kane-- to acquire my teaching certification. My LPS career, however, began at School Number Six in 1998, where I spent the next 17 years honing my craft as a third-grade educator. From those very first days, I was very fortunate that we had a partnership with Merck, and it provided us very impactful opportunity for me to focus on science education and professional learning. I seized that chance, and for the next 25 years, I developed my skills as a passionate champion of science education and high-quality professional development. I also, in 2003, had the honor of being LEA president for 10 years. And I considered it a tremendous privilege to support my colleagues through representing their interests, advocating for them, and advocating for the education profession. In honor of a lifetime, in 2012, I was granted a leave of absence from a prior Board of Ed to move to Washington, DC for a year-long fellowship in President Obama's administration. As one of only five national winners, I had the life-changing experience to work in the Department of Education under Secretary Arne Duncan, where I focused on highly effective STEM teaching and learning and labor-management collaboration, right? Like two worlds colliding. I spent that year adding critical teacher voice to the department. I got to travel the country, and I got to really learn and hone educational best practices. No one thought I was coming back, but I knew I was. Didn't sell my house. At the conclusion of the fellowship, I returned to School Number Six in Grade Three for two years, and as fate would have it, my very last class of students are the current class of 24 seniors, some of them here tonight. In 2015, I moved into my current role as Science Specialist, a position where I've strived to ensure a strong education in science and other areas for pre-K to 12 students. 2023 continues to be a very exciting time to be both a teacher of science and a student. We need a very highly effective program to help our students access high-paying STEM jobs, develop crucial problem-solving skills, and empower them to be informed citizens. So, I'm proud of our department already, its members, and I consider it a privilege to work each day to support them the best I can, both collectively and individually. So, you might wonder, how does one get here to literally be chosen for their dream job? Well, undoubtedly, the ingredients are a lot of work, a little bit of luck, but that recipe is marinated and baked with building relationships. Relationships change outcomes. Some of those relationships develop over months, some over years, and some over a lifetime. First and foremost, they say gratitude starts at home. To my parents, my mom and dad, thank you for giving me roots to stay true to who I am and wings to fly. To the rest of my tribe, family, lifelong friends, and coworkers who have become friends, thank you for traveling this journey with me and caring always and in all ways. The love is mutual. To Mrs. Perkins, thank you. I see you. You have been a mentor to me as my principal and for years after that. You taught me that if you really want change, you got to meet people where they are. And if you're striving for something, be ready. Be ready when that opportunity comes along. You now have had tremendous influence on two of the most important days in my career. I will not forget that, and I promise to make you proud of your choice. Mayor Armstead, thank you. Thank you for supporting me in this work. Thank you for being here. Thank you for supporting STEM, coming to our events. It's important that students know that they have the city behind them. When caring adults can work together, opportunities for students are endless. Thank you. Board members, I thank each and every one of you for placing your confidence in me for the future and also recognizing my past here. Saskia, there is obviously a little special note there as a former student of mine. I'm so very proud of you. My administrator colleagues, Ms. Lewis, thank you for your listening ear over the years at the PDRC and your collaboration as we tried to solve some problems and have a pretty good laugh or two while we were doing it. Mr. Olivera, I just recently met you, and so thank you for seeing my potential in this role, and I look forward to working with you. There are a lot of other administrators either here or online. I thank you. We come from different backgrounds, different subjects and passions, but we care about kids and we care about the profession, and I thank you for helping me be a better educator and leader. Dr. Burghammer, I saved you for last.
Wow.
I know you've been waiting. I thank you for your support throughout this journey. We've had a number of conversations about teaching and learning and how to do better for our students, and I appreciated each one of those. But one in particular stands out for me. And you asked me, and I quote, "What wisdom have you gained?" I gave an answer that was honest and believed in it, but I've had a lot more time to reflect on that, and I'd like to close with a few of those learnings. One, you are never wrong if you're doing right by students. Two, no education is ever wasted, ever. If someone offers you an olive branch, take it. It's never too late to build a new relationship or mend an old one. The only thing guaranteed in life is change, and when it happens, be graceful and keep it moving. Stand up for who stands up for you. It's true, no man is an island because even the hardest worker has to ask for and accept help. And finally, be ready for what life has in store for you because you really are the master of your own fate. So, I thank you from the bottom of my heart, and I am committed to working with all stakeholders to provide an excellent science education, and I can't wait to get started. Thank you.
Good evening. I am Esmeralda Cabrera, new vice principal at School One. I was born and raised in Passaic, New Jersey, from immigrant parents that have come and searched for the American dream and a better life. My mother, Esperanza Silva, believed in the importance of education. She made sure my two sisters and I went to school every single day, rain, snow, walk it out, even if we were sick. Thanks to her, I am one credit shy from a doctorate degree in curriculum and instruction. I stand here today as an example, que si se puede. In English, yes, you can. I'd like to take this moment to thank the Linden Board of Education members, community, Superintendent Ms. Perkins, Principal Diaz, School One Hiring Committee, for allowing me the opportunity to serve them and their students. I promise not to disappoint, and I look forward to collaborating with everyone to ensure that School One becomes a blue-ribbon school.
All right.
Thank you, and have a blessed day.
Good evening, everyone. I want to share my heartfelt appreciation to Board President Dr. Burghammer, Vice President Ms. Thomas, all our board members, Superintendent Mrs. Perkins, Assistant Superintendent Ms. Lewis, and Mr. Olivera for their dedication to our district. Thank you. I stand before you as a proud immigrant. I came to the United States from Haiti when I was 11 years old, not speaking a word of English. I remember my first day of school in Elizabeth being frightened of the unknown. One of my first memories of school was when my ESL teacher, Mrs. Julie, picked me up and brought me to her classroom. She was so kind and patient with me over the months as I learned about language, culture, and life in the United States. In my junior year of high school, my family moved to London, and I have lived in London ever since. After graduating, I attended Rutgers University, where I planned to pursue a career in international law. Little did I know my plans would change. I went to France to study abroad, and while there, I volunteered at an elementary school as part of the community service requirement. The first day there, I discovered a part of me I hadn't known about and found my passion in life. I love working with the little ones. But now, I had to make a decision. Go to law school or pursue a career in education? It's not a surprise which one I chose. I returned to London and pursued classes in education at Kane University, where I soon earned my two master's degrees, one in instruction and curriculum with a specialty in teaching English as a second language, and the second one is in educational leadership. And I have been working in London as both an ESL and French teacher for over 23 years. When I was asked to step in as acting supervisor of ESL and world languages last year, I was honored to represent my colleagues and advocate for our students and their families. In my new role as Director of Multilanguage Learners and World Languages, I will continue to support and guide my team towards achieving our shared vision of excellence. To think that, at 11 years old, I, like all our ML students, wondered how I would master the language and how I would become successful in this new country. Well, I hope that my journey will be an inspiration to not only my staff, but for our students as well, not only in Linden, but all over the world. At 11 years old, I was a brand-new ESL student, and today I stand before you as the new director of multilanguage learners and world languages. And to the young people that are in the audience, remember, you can do anything, your heart desire. Never give up. Never, never give up. Remove the word "I can't" in your vocabulary because you can. Believe in yourself. I believe that all multilanguage students can achieve their wildest dreams, and I am honored and humbled to lead a staff that truly goes above and beyond for our students. I would like to take this opportunity to thank my mother. Without you, Mom, I don't know where I would be. You believed in me, and you spoiled me. You allowed me to travel all over the world, and because of you, I'm here today, and I thank you. I would also like to take this opportunity to thank my children that are in the audience and my husband for encouraging me and believing in me along this journey. There's been plenty of nights where I stayed at hotel 10, but you were very supportive, and I thank you for that. And thank you to the Board of Education. Thank you to Mrs. Perkins. I look forward to working under your leadership, your guidance. Thank you, everyone. Have a wonderful night.
Mayor Armstead, please approach the podium.
First of all, good evening, everyone, again. I'd like to congratulate... Let me get the names here. Hold on. Oh, okay. Hold on, hold on. It's here somewhere. Hold on. Oh, okay. Esmeralda Cabrera, who I don't really know, but congratulations. And I'm sure you're going to do a great job here. I'm sure if you lived in London, we'd have some great stories to tell about you and your family. Cindy Appelinski. Many of you don't know, we could do a geography lesson and we could talk about parks and ponds that were named after her family. They've been around for quite some time, and they contributed to the city's greatness, as I would say. It takes a village, and your family was part of this village. And so, thank you for all they've done, and thank you for doing a great job. We've always done a great job. And we're very happy to have you and working in your capacity now. Michelle Crawley. How could I not mention Michelle Crawley? The daughter of Mr. and Mrs. Jenkins, Bruce Jenkins. And we talked about being a village. Well, I can go back to the year 2000 when they were out there helping with Pop Warner, not because they had children out there, just because they wanted to, and they wanted to make the program a success. So thank you for raising two beautiful children. And there's another, there's a side story here because, you know, we always talk about history. Well, I just found out a couple of months ago that we have a Ford Expedition that we bought in 2016. And I'm going to tell you right now, the car still runs. It is the best $5,000 I've ever spent. And I just found out a couple of weeks ago that you were the previous owner. When the guy sold it to me, he said, you know, this is a one-owner car. He says, "The guy who owned this car took real good care of it." So, I mean, you're like in the family, okay? We got your car. Great running car. And I hope to have it for another 10 years. I give it to the boys. Thank you for doing a great job with your children, okay? And last but certainly not least, I have to congratulate my wife, Dani Orlean. She calls herself Dani Orlean. But if she gets pulled over by the police, she'll say, "I'm Mrs. Armstead." So I want to congratulate her, but there's a story within the story, okay? Because we've married for 28 years now. And when I first married her, she had a degree, and she decided that she was, she wanted to be in education. So, being a good husband, I said, "Go back to school," you know, "and we'll see you through it." So she got her certifications. We had Brianna. She continued getting certified. She landed a very good job over in Elizabeth as the French teacher. And it was for gifted and talented students. She had nine students in one class and I think 12 in another. And that's all she did all day. She was really in what we would refer to as a comfort zone. And then one day, she comes home and she says, "I heard you're not doing a good job with the ESL program in London. They're classifying students this way and that way. The kids aren't getting what they need." So she says, "I'm going to apply to teach in London." I said, "Okay." And I looked at her salary, and I took her temperature right away. I thought she might have been losing her mind because it was a $6,000 pay cut. And she came to London, but it was because she thought our children weren't getting what they needed. So I commend her for that. And then she kept getting her certifications, became certified to be a principal. She became certified to be, she got a plus 30, maybe the plus 50, whatever you guys do in education. But she got it. She got everything she needed. And then she started applying for jobs in towns to advance herself, I guess to make up for that $6,000 she was losing every year. And it was to no avail. But I told her, I said, "Things are not going to be this way forever." I said, "We're going to keep fighting, keep working hard." And that's what she did. She kept working hard. She put her heart and soul into this education system. And my career as a politician also. I'll be the first to admit, she writes all my literature and designs it and everything. She's, I mean, it's the best thing that ever happened to me. She gave me four beautiful children, and I'm just so proud. I could almost cry. I told her, "We got to keep fighting." I said, "Keep fighting because we're not fighting for ourselves. We're fighting for a city, a community, and everybody must succeed in this town." I said, "It's our job to raise the bar, whether it's education, whether it's government. It's our job to raise the bar and make London, let London be all that it could be." And I'm so proud of my wife, I really am, and our little, our little fam, our big family, okay? And I just wish her all the best. I know she's going to do a good job because, as I tell, as I tell everyone, we are workers. We're workers. It's not, well, it's not unusual. She talks about being at the Board of Education at 10 o'clock. It's not unusual for me to get a call sometimes at 11 or 12. "Where are you?" "Well, I'm in City Hall, honey, and we're working on something. We're doing something, trying to move this city forward." And that's what this is all about. People say it's politics. Yes, there's a certain amount of politics everywhere. Wherever you go, there's going to be politics. But at the end of the day, we have to leave this thing better than we found it. And that's what, that's what this is all about. I tell each and every one of us here, you're here making decisions over our children, okay? Don't get caught up in the politics. This is our job to leave it better than we found it. And Cindy, if it was politics, and it's not, and you know it's not, we talked a few nights ago, and I told you how much I, "Thank God I'm a history buff," I said. I know about the ponds and the parks named after your family. We don't play that game here. We're here to prove everybody wrong. If you're the best person for the job, you're going to get the job. That's all that really matters. When I leave here, I want people to say, "I left it better than I found it." And that we all should have that attitude when it comes to education. Leave it better than we found it. Thank you all, and God bless you all. Congratulations.
Thank you. That's been pretty good. Board members, are you ready to continue on with the agenda?
Yes.
We will move forward on to the finance report.
The Finance Committee, upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary, present the following motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval. I approve items 1 through 33. I respectfully ask for a second.
Roll call.
Ms. Sintron.
Yes.
Mr. Dela Cruz.
Yes.
Mrs. Fleming.
Yes.
Ms. Pino.
Yes.
Ms. Rosada Casada.
Yes.
Ms. Carrillo.
Yes.
Ms. Thomas.
Yes.
And Dr. Berghammer.
Yes.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to the Buildings, Grounds, and Security Report.
The Buildings, Grounds, and Security Committee, upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary, present the following motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval. Looking for a second motion from 1 through number... Number 11.
Roll call.
Ms. Sintron.
Yes.
Mr. Dela Cruz.
Yes.
Mrs. Fleming.
Yes.
Ms. Pino.
Yes.
Ms. Rosada Casada.
Yes.
Ms. Carrillo.
I would like to recuse myself from item 9. Yes, all other items.
Ms. Thomas.
Yes.
And Dr. Berghammer.
Yes.
Thank you. Moving forward to the Planning and Policy Report. The Planning and Policy Committee, upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, presents the following motion to the Linden Board of Education for approval. First reading for policy numbers 5131.6, drugs, alcohol, steroids, and tobacco substance use, as well as 5131.6R, drugs, alcohol, steroids, and tobacco substance use. I ask for a second to approve item number 1.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Sintron.
Yes.
Mr. Dela Cruz.
Yes.
Mrs. Fleming.
Yes.
Ms. Pino.
Yes.
Ms. Rosada Casada.
Yes.
Ms. Carrillo.
Yes.
Ms. Thomas.
Yes.
And Dr. Berghammer.
Yes.
Thank you. Now we will move on to comments from the public. Members of the public desiring to make a public comment may come forward at this time. For those watching online, if you wish to make a comment or ask a question, please utilize the Raise Your Hand feature on the online meeting platform. Please begin your comments by stating your name and address. Individuals are invited to speak on one topic at a time, and no individual will speak more than once until all individuals so desiring have spoken once. The public is reminded that to ensure the efficient and orderly operations of the meeting, members of the public will be limited to speaking on items for three minutes.
Ms. Thomas, before these young men speak, and I look forward to hearing what they have to say, can I just make one statement about public comment tonight?
Yes.
I anticipate that some of the people in the audience today that come to the mic to speak are going to want to discuss some incidents that occurred involving Linden students at an off-site location. We welcome you to the mic. You can talk about that. You can make your comment. I want you all to be aware that the Board has been reminded and advised that they cannot speak on confidential student matters. They can't speak on confidential security matters. They can't speak on any matters that might involve potential discipline. So to the extent that you have comments, again, you're free to make your comments. I just want to manage expectations and make you all aware that the Board is not going to be able to engage in any discussion with you or any back and forth with you on those particular topics.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Myles Hamilton. I'm a senior at the Linden High School football team. We are here to speak on behalf of my teammates, and we urge you to reconsider moving our games to Friday, Friday nights to Saturday afternoons. I understand that there has been issues on and off, I mean, on and off the field that have shed a negative light on our positive season. None of those issues have nothing, have anything to do with us. We are representing the school, the city, and our family the right way. Moving games to Saturday afternoons does not solve the problems occurring Friday, on Friday nights. We are here to give you possible solutions as well as reasons why Saturday afternoon games could hurt us. And I would just like to say, as like, as like, we have the most Division I recruits on our football team that we've had in a long time. And there's a lot of kids that have to go to Saturday games that are out of state to different colleges. Like, he had to go to University of New Haven the last, last week. He needs to go to LIU for a game. I've been invited by Monmouth and Syracuse. Like, it's like, it's not, it's not fun for us. Like, it's a business. And, and I just feel like, like we're, we're, we're dealing with, we're getting a consequence for other people's actions. And we're, I got a list of reasons why, you know, of why the games can be switched, and my other captains are going to read that off.
Good evening. My name is Taquan Thomas, and I'm going to read some facts. All students, so these are, these are some, like a list of possible situations that we can use to forward, to go forward. All students must have IDs to enter the stadium. Student IDs are scanned upon entry the same way they are scanned at school. Middle school students must come with a parent or guardian. Limit the game to family members only. Each player gets two or three tickets, and only those with tickets may enter.
Good evening. My name is Adrian Castillo. I'm going to read some of the rest. Away teams must exit and enter through the top gate. We can sell digital tickets like other schools. Security guards, administrators, and police officers can encourage fans to stay in the bleachers. Playing Friday night games is a huge advantage for us, especially when teams are traveling from far distances.
Good evening. My name is Davon McQuintup. Many of our away games are on Friday nights when we play Saturday. We lose the day of recovery, putting us at a disadvantage. We have one of the nicest fields in the state, putting our team on display on the lights. Has a great impact on our future Linden football players. Many of our parents work Saturday mornings and afternoons. Now they will not be able to see us play.
Good evening. My name is Alex Donick. Many of us have a job on the weekends, and we set our work schedule for the season in August. Now we have to tell our bosses we can't work Saturdays or we have to quit football. Playing Friday nights allows many of us who want to play in college visit schools, some of us who have been invited to Monmouth University, Syracuse, Long Island, New Haven, and many others. Playing Saturday afternoons limits our chances of seeing these schools. And I would just want to say thank you for your time. We know this decision is not easy, but simply moving the problems from one day to the next is not a solution. Thank you.
Okay, good evening. Erica Hernandez, 133 Princeton Road. I'm standing here tonight as a student athlete, a part of the Class of 2024, Senior Class Secretary, and member of the LHS marching band. And alongside me are other senior class officers and students and athletes, a part of the Class of 2024. September 20th, I had sent an email to everyone sitting up there with the focus on the football games and the date changes. The first was homecoming game, which is in two days, and we all know it's too late to change. We are tremendously disappointed with that decision. So I would like to focus on Senior Night, that is still a month away. We are told that the game will now be on Saturday because of the amount of fights and how students cannot control themselves. As a high school student that attends LHS, I know there will be no difference. Kids fight at 7:30 in the morning at Speedway, 12:00 in the afternoon, and 7:30 at night. You all say that we don't tolerate any sort of behavior, but for them, those kids, they get suspended, come back, repeat the same acts because they're the ones that don't care how many disciplinary points they have against them. One of the most memorable football games is Senior Night, not only for the players, but the cheerleaders and marching band. How is it fair to us that we can no longer have a game under the lights on Friday, but instead we are having a senior afternoon all because kids cannot control themselves? The band being a key part of the football games, being at every home and away games, cheering the players on. Marching band has competitions on Saturday, and we don't know the times until the Monday prior. Again, how is it fair to the seniors, a part of marching band, that they can't be at their own Senior Night? Unlike myself, the other band members may only have one Senior Night, this being one of them. This really brought me down. I look forward to standing on the football field with the cheerleaders, football players, celebrating our last home game. And I know that in changing the home football games, no one even thought of the marching band, which is pretty upsetting. I understand that you can't please anyone, and there will be always someone that won't be able to attend. But we should focus on those who are involved within the game, like the cheerleaders and marching bands and the football players themselves, and not the students that can't control themselves. As Senior Class Secretary, this makes me so upset that students, athletes, and others are coming up to me asking if there's anything I could do because they know how involved I am, and they know I will speak up for what's right. These football games hold so many memories and dreams for younger students and athletes. So please take that into serious consideration. At the end of the day, we just want to have a normal senior year. With COVID affecting our first steps into high school life, we would like to leave with some type of normalcy and excitement. I really hope you understand where this message is coming from. Have a good night.
Hello, my name is Zoe Mora, and I'm a senior at Linden High School. I stand before you today, representing the Class of 2024 as their Vice President. I appreciate giving, I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to speak to you today. I come to you to discuss a few issues that we, as a class, feel need to be rectified. The first is high number of substitutes to go along with the high class size. There are many classes that have up to 30 students per class. Not only is this unfair to our teachers, but unfair to the students as well. It's not possible to learn, and teachers are more worried about behaviors and content. The second is a high number of behavior issues that we are having in the high school, fights, smoking, gun threats. None of this should be, all of this should be a no-tolerance issue. We should not be scared to come to school while our school day is falling apart. What we, as a class, can't fathom is while issues at school aren't getting any better, you take away the one thing as students and seniors can enjoy is, which is the nighttime football games. We understand there have been many incidents at the games, but to just quickly move the games to Saturday afternoon when many have work and weekend obligations, it's not fair. Saturday, there are volleyball games and testing and many other things where people can't make it. Support your school, they say, but then, but then you make the games for when most can't attend. How come you can have, come up with, how come we come up with less drastic methods, such as some of the football, football boys listed? Or if you're not under 18, you have to attend with a parent, like how Seaside is at night? As a senior, we lost a lot of our, as a senior, we lost enough of our schooling with COVID. And now, once again, we're being punished because of middle school students' actions. How about because if middle school behaviors take away their football field graduation that they got while our seniors last year did not? Of course, that wouldn't be fair because they're being punished for something different. So I'm asking that you relook at this issue and take into account that us seniors are not the cause of many of these issues, and we're tired being the ones punished for having things... and we're tired of being the ones punished for having things, having, being the one, we're tired of being punished and the ones having things taken away. COVID took away our eighth grade year, and now the board has taken away our senior year. Something needs to be done.
Good evening. My name is Cindy Colotto. I'm a senior at Linden High School and the co-captain of the Linden High School cheer team. There was an altercation that occurred a couple weeks ago at one of our Friday night football games. Our home games have been changed to Saturday afternoon football games. This altercation occurred amongst middle schoolers that don't attend our school. The solution was to move these games to a different, to different dates. Many of us senior athletes involved with football and cheer, as well as band, would like to enjoy and have our senior night, not a senior day. Us seniors and student athletes enjoy just having the experience of our Friday night games. Saturday plans are made. We have jobs. Football players also have other plans with schools and everything, as well as band with competitions. Schedules are planned accordingly. The enjoyment of Friday night football games are being taken away. Instead of making these decisions based on the same students constantly choosing to do the wrong thing with the same consequences, let's take a minute to see what we can do differently and not take away from the students that are continuing to do the right thing and what they enjoy to do, no matter the chaos going around us in our high school. Thank you for your time.
Hello, everybody. I'm Holly Stash from Taquan Thomas's mom. He's a senior this year, and I'm one of the ones that would be affected and not be at his game if the senior night is moved to a Saturday. On top of that, I have to agree with what they just said about fighting happening before school. Moving the games to Saturday is not going to change if there's violence. We're not moving school to Saturday because, guess what? We're fighting before, after school, during school. You know, it just doesn't make sense to punish our student athletes and change it. You guys said a lot of things today about a village. Where's our village? We need a village to stand up and make sure our games and we're not punished for what is being done by not even our students. So where's the village? Let's see the village stand up and stick up for our boys and make sure our games don't get changed.
Hi. Hello, I'm Carmen Martinez. My son is Jordan Austin. This is senior year. I watched all of my children have senior night and experience it, and I feel like that every child that does not do violence should be able to get the joy of doing what they do every day, which is their senior year. Amen, thank you.
Hi, everyone. Donna Hernandez, 133 Princeton Road. Just want to say thank you for acknowledging me before. As you can see, these are my students. These are my kids. I stand behind them. As I said on Tuesday night, we have three, I understand homecoming can't be changed. We have three weeks for senior night. We have Friday night lights. That's our games, not Saturday under the sun. We don't want a Saturday afternoon. We would appreciate if we can keep it Friday night. Again, like you know, we have parents who work Saturday, myself. I don't get out until 2:00, so I will also miss the game. You know, like I said on Tuesday, for the students that are coming, give them a wristband, have them come in with their ID. I did hear that it's middle school students that was causing a ruckus. Let's just have our senior students there and their parents. Let, you know, the other team, you know, again, buy tickets. But I would appreciate if you can really think about this and keep our, you know, games to the Friday night for October 20th. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for listening to us tonight.
Good evening, everyone. First, I want to take the time to say I thank God for allowing me this opportunity of actually being a School Four teacher of Language Arts at the fourth grade. I thank God for allowing me this opportunity. I thank Him for allowing me to see another day that was not promised to me. Next, I would like to thank Ms. Perkins, our superintendent, our assistant superintendents, the board president, and the entire board. Also, I would like to thank my principal, Dr. Susan Olivero. Thank you. And I would also like to thank my School Four staff and family, because that's what I consider them, my School Four family. I also want to thank the parents at the School Four family that looked up to me, believed in me, and knew that I was going to be there for their children. I want to thank my family, my mom and my dad. I want to thank my husband. And I also want to thank my church family. I also would like to take this time to say that I've worked so hard for this. As a matter of fact, it's been 23 years in the making, from being an aide to a para in the pre-K to fifth grade subbing, short and long term, and now myself being a teacher. To God be the glory. I've always believed our children deserve the best, and I also believe I am part of that equation, helping them to be the best. My brother passed away unexpectedly in January of this year. And he had dreams, too, and he didn't get a chance to be able to achieve them. But I've gotten that chance to fulfill the dream of always being a teacher, something that I've done as a kid, pretending with my six siblings, being a teacher for them because I was one of, second to the oldest. And now I'm being able to fulfill all the dreams that I have ever wanted, and that is being the teacher to our children, who I know can be and will be what they have purposed for them in their lives. I thank you for allowing me to be part of that big dream. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carruthers. Ms. Carruthers, may you state your name and address, and congratulations.
I'm sorry. So yes, my name is Antoine Carruthers, and I reside at 1010, what's my, look, I'm so, Ironbound Avenue, Plainfield, New Jersey. Thank you.
My name is Craig Haller in 120 Donaldson Place. First of all, I'd like to congratulate everybody on their awards and appointment tonight. And I do, I was so proud of seeing the students stand up and speak their voices on something that they're concerned with. There's nothing wrong with that. I commend them. I think they deserve all the support they can get. Now, the reason why I'm here again is to bring up other issues that I brought up on Tuesday night, is that, and I know it doesn't just involve Linden, it's all over, not just New Jersey, all over the country. Supply chain shortages. So again, I have to urge this governing body here to look at where can they expand to fit the growing needs of our growing student population. You know, we have at least two schools that I know of, and I know it was pointed out, another one that uses schools nine and 10. I believe they'd be perfect to expand upward instead of out. Property is very expensive. You know, I know building is very expensive. But this is stuff that this board has to look at, with the help of the city government and other agencies of any government or even the, you know, people like me. We're all here to provide the best for our students in this great city of ours. And this is something that we all have to look at. And because of what, you know, was thrown our way to stand and to make these obstacles that we have to face, let's start facing them now, not when it's too late to say, oh, well, we have to do this. Thank you for your time. Have a good night.
There's no pen. Good evening. Claudia Dolan, instructional mathematics coach, schools five and 10, Linden Education Association Vice President, 1309 Thomas Ave in North Brunswick. Tonight, I'm always a proud employee of this district, but tonight I'm just exceptionally proud as I see two people who I admire so much in this district receive roles that they are so well-deserved. So first and foremost, congratulations and welcome to School Five officially, Mrs. Crowley. I had the pleasure of working at School Two with Ms. Crowley as my vice principal and have always appreciated her positive approach to situations and making time to hear out student and teacher concerns. She has already created a warm environment at School Five in which teachers feel supported and heard. She truly hit the ground running for the start of the school year and has made sure our students are comfortable and confident as they walk through the doors. Thank you for all that you have done thus far. I'm looking forward to a wonderful school year, and let's get to work. Next up, I would like to congratulate Cindy Appelinski on being appointed as the supervisor of science. In my short time in this district, Cindy has had a huge impact on both my teaching and my learning. She's truly someone I learn from every single day. As a first-year teacher, Cindy came in to offer support in science, but at the time, I actually was okay in science. I needed some help in other areas. She said she was only going to come for a half hour. I think that I picked up my students late from specials and kept her a little bit longer as I needed help figuring out where to put a word wall and how to set up student seats to optimize learning. She had no problem tackling it, and anything she didn't have an answer for, she said she would get back to me. And to say I'm forever grateful for that one, that first interaction would truly be an understatement. Shortly after that, I had the opportunity to attend a professional development session, more specifically, a Tier One implementation session in which we dove into the knowledge of and expertise using the teacher's manual and kit contents, strategies for developing core ideas, engaging in science and engineering practices, and exposing cross-cutting concepts, as well as skills to utilize the technology resources. I felt leaving empowered and inspired and couldn't believe how much I had learned in just one day. Perhaps what was most important about this experience was the realization that each one of her sessions is planned with research-backed practices. Each tier builds on the one before it and allows the teachers the chance to create a learning environment that is student-centered. When we transitioned to virtual learning in March of 2020 due to the pandemic, there were definitely concerns over what teaching and learning would look like from home. Not to my surprise, but still to my amazement, Cindy managed to take a trimester's worth of learning for grades K through 5 and make it realistic for the virtual setting. My students enjoyed engaging in science experiments, sharing their findings, and reflecting on the designated focus question. In a time of so much unknown, it was comforting to be able to provide them with instruction that felt similar to being in the classroom. Last April, I had the opportunity to attend the NSTA convention in Houston with Cindy. While I left with an abundance of ideas and thoughts of how I can enhance learning in my classroom, Cindy left having planned full professional development sessions for the next school year. Her commitment to teachers and students in science instruction and learning is admirable and truly unmatched. Cindy, I know you're going to be amazing in this role and that the teachers and students of Linden Public School District will continue to benefit from your hard work for years to come. Thank you for your commitment to science and high-quality professional development sessions. I wish you the best of luck, but I know luck isn't really needed for someone who works as hard as you do.
It's finally at the right height for me. Tanya Grissette, 422 Southwood Avenue. A couple things. I stand up here as a parent of a senior who unfortunately does not play sports or marching band, but I do volunteer at the football games. And tonight was a great night for the whole team to be out here when you gave out your first It Takes a Village awards because that was one hell of a village that stood up here. Those children are our future, okay? I can tell you, as a parent, as a PTA volunteer, and just a person that lives in the community, born and raised in Linden, I myself, my eyes and ears are always open. I only have one child, but I advocate for thousands. And there were things that I've witnessed at helping out at the football games that we have staff there and we have security, whether it's police or our own security. But things that I've witnessed as a parent that I was shocked to see. So I currently have an email drafted up for Mr. Mayor Armstead, as well as Chief Hart, not to tell people that they're not doing their jobs properly, but just some suggestions because of things that I witnessed as a parent that clearly aren't being witnessed by others. Or maybe they were, and they're just go unspoken of, I can say. On another note, I did attend the back-to-school night last night. I was kind of hesitant because I know where my son stands with his grades over the years. But being his senior year, I said it's my final back-to-school night, so of course I have to go. As tough as his schedule is, every class going across the street, man, I had comfortable shoes on last night because every class I was across the street at the academy building or the main building. It was very well-organized. I had one of his teachers who brought me, as well as some other parents, to tiers. It was one of his IB classes, English. Ms. Marchese, I believe I'm pronouncing it correctly. He has a hand, two handfuls of teachers over his years in Linden Public Schools that those teachers are always at the tip of my, the tip of my tongue. And she is one that I now added to that list. She was so pleased to have these children in this class for their second year. She was so dedicated and so passionate. So I just wanted to give her a special shout-out and let you guys know that she's a good one right there. But she brought me and some other parents to tiers just because of her dedication to our children and Linden Public Schools. I had another thing, and I think it slipped my mind. I wanted to thank you, though, but last month I had spoken in regards to scheduling issues, and the next day, his schedule was taken care of right away. So thank you so much for that. I forgot what it was, but I'll email you if I have anything. But thank you again, and congratulations to all the newly appointed positions tonight, Ms. Appelinski, School Six.
Hello, my name is Clud Alway, and thank all of you for doing what you do as a service to Linden. I stand here, first of all, as a child of God, as an educator myself for 32 years, and I am here in honor of all of the honorees, but especially Danny Orlin, Armstead. Love her. Love her, the mayor, of course, and the children. I stand here because I've seen her work. I know her dedication. I know that for many years, like she mentioned before, going through getting her degrees, her hard work, and she is one of the, well, after the mayor, the number-two supporter of London for anything London. And I truly appreciate that in her. And just for my family, my mother, who's 100 years old, you know, our family, my children grew up here, all college-educated, with several degrees, have done well. And my husband and I worked here in London. I am an advocate. I listen to the young people. I remember Elizabeth laying in front of City Hall for rights. I still am an advocate for rights, and I hope that all of those issues get resolved and the safety, and I'm sure the town is looking for the safety of what goes on in London. And I know you want your night thing. I can truly understand that. But as a PTA president and all, I understand the ramifications around all that, and maybe all minds can get together because someone said, and I was listening on the, on my phone, I was zooming in to the call, so I didn't want to miss anything, and I heard someone say that, you know, because of the pandemic, and, and of course, so many things were taken away from our young people, and this is something that they really want, and I fully understand it, and I hope all hearts and minds can come together and have the children not just stand here, but have them at the table of the decision-making, because it impacts their lives. So have them at the table, because this impacts their lives. And I wish you all the best and a good year. I'm going to be following you. I love football, and I'm watching Dion right now, and that's my world right now, but I will be following you, all of the young people that were here. But Danny, again, we are in the community. We are extremely proud of you. Come up and get your flowers while you can, because I believe in giving people their flowers while they can. And just to say that we love you and we support all that you do. Keep the good work up. God bless.
Thank you, everyone.
My name is Stephanie Ross, a proud ESL coach for the fabulous Linden Public School District. In honor of Hispanic Heritage Month, there will be a Hispanic Heritage Month celebration on Tuesday, October 3rd, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Linden High School Gymnasium, which will be sponsored by the Linden Education Association. Yes, woo-hoo! Our high school multilingual learners will present their projects on Hispanic cultures, customs, and traditions. There will be a dance instructor giving us salsa lesson, and there will be delicious Spanish foods provided for all the attendees. We hope many Linden staff members and students will join us for this wonderful event. Thank you, and we hope to see many of you there. Have a blessed night.
Are there any other audience members that would like to give comments?
So Superintendent Perkins, and I want to pause there for a second because, take a moment, personal privilege. Superintendent Perkins, can we please give a round of applause to Mrs. Perkins? And in my speech, I'll explain why, why I needed to do that. Linden Board of Education members, President Dr. Berghammer, Mayor Armstead, you still here? My friend Buddy Carlos, how are you, sir? And community members, it is so good to be here, to see, oh, wait, and my friend Annabelle Lewis, we were just teaching together. You were in my classroom, talking to my kids, inter education, and look at you now. It is so great to be here tonight, to see so much of the wonderful things that have occurred this evening. And I want to start with my own personal story and journey. So many of you guys know I was the LEA president for a while, but I also was a very proud ESL teacher. And I came to ESL, I'll be honest, it wasn't, I decided to choose ESL not because I myself was an ESL student, I wasn't even thinking about that at the time, but it was 2010, the Great Recession, bad job market, and I said, well, I want to be a teacher, but there's no teaching jobs right now because we had a governor who did not respect educators and cut our funding drastically, and Linden Public Schools was one of the districts hurt greatly by that man. So I said, let me do the strategic thing. I'll get an ESL cert, do that for a few years, and then switch over to social studies. I never switched over to social studies because I discovered my own identity and myself and the students that I was teaching every single day. And I found that I worked for a department, and I worked with colleagues who truly would go the extra mile every single day for our kids, not only in the classroom, but with their community events, with their involvement. In so many districts, ESL is an afterthought, but here in London, because of the staff, because of the teachers, the paras, the part-time aides, we truly put ESL on the map. And one of those colleagues that I met and got to know very well was Danny Orlene. During that time, I actually didn't know who she was. I just knew her as my friend and colleague who was so devoted to our children. During the pandemic, I remember conversations where she would stay up to 1 o'clock in the morning saying, what do you think about this? Is this a good activity to engage the kids virtually? Is this something?
That is.
That is the passion that people don't normally see. So to my good buddy, congratulations on your appointment this evening, so very well deserved. I was a happy ESL teacher at the high school, but then my supervisor at the time decided that, well, we got to send you off to an elementary school. I did not want to teach little kids at all. I was not looking forward to it. But I got transferred to school number six, and I met a dynamic principal leader who took me under her wing and said, listen, we're going to grow you. It's okay if you don't know everything, but you're going to grow and develop, and we're going to mentor you. And that's exactly what she did. I remember the first observation conversation when she observed me in a kindergarten classroom, which, by the way, that was the grade I most feared. And it was fine, my observation was pretty okay, right? And she said, but this is just the beginning for you, and you're going to soar to heights here and in this district. And I did, and I thank you, Mrs. Perkins, Superintendent Perkins, and it brings me great joy to say those words to you tonight. At School Six, I was, I had to push into a third-grade classroom, and it was the classroom of Ms. Cynthia Appelinski. Wow, did I get an education on what it means to educate third-grade students, watching her, observing her. We were such a dynamic duo that when Mrs. Perkins or Mrs. Patanashia would come and observe, they couldn't even tell who the ESL teacher was versus who the classroom teacher was. It was a seamless partnership. And again, at that time, I didn't know that she was the former LEA president for 10 years, that she devoted herself to our district, to our staff, but what I got to know was her heart, her passion, her intelligence, and her charisma. Because of her, I was able to thrive as an elementary teacher, and I thank you, and it's so happy to see that you have gotten your flowers tonight. We are an amazing district. Now, people don't know, or people forget, but my blood comes to these schools, from School Six to Linden High School. So I keep a very close eye on what goes on in our district. This tonight represented what is the best of our community, all of us, all the stakeholders working together to ensure that the right people are in the right spots, that our students are heard. And by the way, those students, I don't know who coached them, but wow, they presented the problem, they offered solutions, and even though we adults, we may have to make decisions at the end of the day that may not make them happy, I know that there is a leader here that listens, is thoughtful, and is caring, and will do what's best for everyone, for the safety of all our kids here today. We have so much potential in our city, and tonight was a great example of what happens when we put away divisions, when we put away the past, when we sit down and work together, because that's what it's all about, all stakeholders working together. There is an article in our contract, oh, and I'm remiss to not acknowledge President Mengele and Vice President Dolan, thank you, you guys, for doing such a fantastic job. There's an article in our contract that says it is the mutual responsibility of staff, management, everyone, the board, and the LEA to educate our kids. Now, that's not often talked about in the grievances or this and that, but it is something I read almost every single day and I took very seriously. Here in London, we have all the right people, all the right ingredients in place to go to next heights. And I know that when I come and visit again, it's because we're going to be getting more blue-ribbon schools, more active aides for all our departments, and pushing our students to achieve greatness. So thank you, everyone. Thank you for having me back, and great congratulations to an amazing, oh, my God, and how could I forget, Ms. Crawley. So Ms. Crawley was a colleague of mine at the high school, devoted, and what could I say? It is such a perfect, perfect mix or match that you're going to be the leader of School Five. Congratulations. Thank you to all of you tonight. And remember, working together, we will achieve greatness, and let's stay at the table and do what's best for our kids.
Good evening. Rob Mengele, 18 Trinity Place, Montclair, New Jersey, LHS social studies teacher, proud LEA president. Madam President, with your permission, I'd like to speak on two items, if that's okay?
Sure.
First point of information, will there, will items 47 and 48 from the personnel report be posted online?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. I've known that following Eloy is always a very dangerous game. I'm going to try my best. Good evening, community members, Board of Education members, students, colleagues. I need to take a moment, I'm going to start on a little bit of a downer, we're going to end strong. Any loss in a community is a major loss, but for the LEA and for me, the loss of Debbie Sager hits incredibly hard. Ms. Sager was an educator and an advocate like no other. She was fiercely protective of her students and incredibly passionate in her pursuit of equity and better working conditions for her colleagues and learning conditions for her students. May her memory be for a blessing. When we opened our doors just three short weeks ago, feels like longer, neither here nor there, we were and remain a district in transition. We had welcomed in new administrative staff, new teaching staff, new support staff, some of our veteran staff found themselves in new roles and new places. With this change, we welcome over 6,000 students into our buildings, into our classrooms, and into our hearts. The beginning of any school year is a busy one, but the ways in which our staff build relationships and create community is second to none. The LEA says we always go the extra mile, and in this way, our staff go above and beyond. Like our newly-named science supervisor said a few moments ago, relationships matter. The relationships that we build with our students matter. I know how excited as, as school staff we get when we see our kids get up in front of the Board of Education and talk about what's going on in their lives. We see them share with each other, we see them finally get what it is in math class or science class, we see them finally connect with something in history. It is one of the best things we do. We have a staff here who goes above and beyond to build those relationships. They work tirelessly to create the welcoming spaces and lasting educational experiences that Linden students deserve. This district's village is strengthened by the almost 1,000 people I have the honor to represent. As we move through our school year, I'm certain everyone will remember that this village is parents and family members, students, and school staff that show up every day, in and out for, every day in and day out for our kids, and I know we will make choices that strengthen that village. Thank you.
We would like to take the, this opportunity to invite our family that will listen in at home and our families that are here. On October 18, we will be hosting a parent night, and we'd like to thank the board for approving it tonight. It's going to start at 6:30. We're going to have dinner, followed with an expo of all the wonderful things that we do in the Linden Public School District. I'm here with my, with Tanya McGillis. Would you like to say something about the program?
Yes, the event is going to be for all our ESL families from all schools. We are going to have, like Ms. Orlene said, we're going to have dinner first, and then we're going to transition into stations where the teachers will speak about the programs and everything that is being offered. So we would like to welcome all of you to attend.
We will also have representatives from the city that will come in to showcase all the wonderful community events that they have for our children as well. And we will have someone from the business community there to talk about job opportunities for our Linden families and also our ESL classes, which we will be offering starting in January.
And translators will be there as well.
Yes, and translators will be there. So if you know someone, tell them to come.
We have representative for every language that we speak in our community in Linden, and of course, it's going to be my pleasure, my honor to all of you as a principal school number nine. Thank you.
And also to end, I would like to thank my wonderful staff from the ESL bilingual department. On September 9th, we had a community event in which all of my staff showed up, and we were able to help 80 families fill out their meal plans. You know, our goal, our goal was 15, and we did 80, so we're excited. So there's more to come in our department, so just be on the lookout. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Hi, my name is Brenda Kenister. I'm an eighth-grade science teacher at McManus, 311 Higher Street, Tom's River, New Jersey. I wanted to congratulate all the new appointees tonight, but I especially want to congratulate Cindy Appelinski for her new appointment of the science supervisor. I've been teaching science in London since 2001 and have worked closely with Ms. Appelinski for most of that time. Ms. Appelinski is the glue to the science department. We would not have survived COVID and past COVID without her. She works endlessly to make sure that we have everything we need to do our jobs well. She's always been dedicated to the children of London, to the staff of this district, and in making sure London is always one step ahead in our science instruction. I am so excited to have her now lead, in what is my opinion, the best department in Linden Public Schools. Congratulations to Ms. Appelinski and to everybody else.
That concludes our comments from the public. Now we're going to move on to any new and unfinished business that the board would like to discuss.
I know it's getting late, but do you have any update on our afternoon adult program?
So in conjunction with the ESL department offering the ESL classes beginning in January, they are partnering with CIC. There's also going to be later in January, advanced citizenship classes that are going to be advanced citizenship classes that are going to be offered at Linden High School that will be put on board agendas. There's going to be parent engagement series, the Part III, Part IV, Part V, VI, and VII forthcoming, based on these first preliminary meetings with the parents on what their needs are and what they're wanting. Then, we will provide the services. Plus, we're going to have the parent academies to provide social-emotional workshops and other workshops that parents will need, that we're going to be offering. It'll be on forthcoming agendas.
Anything?
Yes, I do. The tough part, going back to the cameras inside the classroom. Would like the board to know, I would like to say, if we can get a survey together and send out to all the parents and teachers, and see how, what responses we get with the safety of our staff and students with cameras in the classroom, whether they're for it or against it. And at least, we know that if they're against it, then we have to look at other measures for the safety. And if they're for it, then we have to figure out, moving forward, how we go about it, and that staff does not get held liable in the sense that they would be graded as a performance issue. Because I don't want it for performance. We want it for safety, for our students and our staff.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, now, we will move on to board member comments. Are there any board members that would like to give a comment this evening?
I would, too.
I'll start. Excuse me, Mr. Dela Cruz. Ms. Pino is going to start right now, okay?
Good evening, everyone. It's nice seeing everyone here tonight. It was really nice, this evening was very nice, even though there was a lot of things going on, being said. We have taken everything into consideration. And our deepest condolences to the family members that have passed on, and those who are retiring, congratulations. And like I said before, Patron shots is what's happening instead of the pina coladas. But congratulations to all those who are new-appointed tonight. Big shoes to fill, absolutely. And just, everybody have a great night, all right? Good night. I know it's late, we want to go home. So, good night, everyone. Donna, congrats, okay? Congratulations, okay? Go ahead, my glove. Thank you, good night.
Okay, so, I was thinking about saying nothing, but tonight has made me say something. First and foremost, condolences to our losses in our district. And congratulations to our retirees. Congratulations to our Kane Scholars. And everybody that got the Takes a Village Award, congrats to all, okay? That tells you that we are doing good stuff here in Linden. And today was, it's been here, I've been here now, this is going to be our 30th year, okay? This would be, we're getting close to the end of the year, believe it or not. So, we can say we only have about two more meetings. So, the year is coming to a close real quick. Before you know it, we'd be here in December. Well, we won't be here in December, but we're celebrating the holidays. And I remember, right when we came back into live meetings, the roughness that we had, and people we were turning down back in the past. And they didn't understand why we were turning them down, and things that were being said. And I said, "We will always correct what we did wrong, if we did anything wrong." You have a board that listens, and now you have a board that listens even more, okay? Ms. Appelinsky, in the past, we know we made a decision, but I told you hang in there, and you did hang in there. Congratulations, very well deserved. Everybody that got positions to move to a higher ground, congratulations, very well deserved. We have set the blocks, and we build them, and we're moving forward. The students that came here took me back to my day in high school, when we were backing up our teachers, because they weren't getting a contract also. And the whole school walked out together, went to the Board of Ed to get these contracts rolling. So, they reminded me of my past, okay? I always have a song in my head, and I said it back in the past, the Michael Jackson "Man in the Mirror" song. If you guys listen to that song, this is what those students are doing. They want to make that change, and make that change for the positive. Your board is here, and we are the men in the mirror. We are trying to make that change, and we are seeing the changes now. Okay, so, it takes the village. If you listen to that song, "Man in the Mirror", it says a lot about the way we're going. I thank you all for being here this late at night. Donna Hernandez, thank you. Tanya, you also deserve a thank you. And yes, I was at that meeting yesterday in the high school, okay? Same thing, we're moving forward, a lot of changes. People don't like change, they're always afraid of change. But when the change comes, and it comes out for the better outcome, that's when we say, "Oh, it did work." So, let's take it a step at a time, we will move forward. Thank you, guys, for your support, and thank you for having faith in us. Have a good night.
Good evening, I'll be very quick. I would just like to say, express my condolences to the families of the individuals that we lost. Congratulations to those that are the recipients of the Takes a Village Award. And also, congratulations to all who continue to grow in our school system. And obviously, a special congratulations to Ms. Appelinsky, who's my third-grade teacher, and is a big part of my educational career.
I will go next. So, I don't want to go on for a long time, but I do want you to know that it is an honor to have served for you, the city of Linden, the Board of Education, and to be able to work alongside some of the best people that I have ever met in my life. So, it is an honor and a privilege. And I thank you all for being who you are and doing such great things, and teaching me so that I can be better when, you know, I'm no longer here, but for my lifetime. So, I just want to thank you all, and have a great evening, and be proud of your city. This is a beautiful city and beautiful children. Thank you, have a good evening.
I'd just like to thank everyone for coming out this evening. It truly does take a village. So, let's keep on working together to push our district forward. And let's have a good evening. Dr. B, is there anything else you'd like to say?
No, just close out the meeting.
All right, motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Roll call.
Dintron?
Yes.
Mr. Dela Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Fleming?
Yes.
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Rosada Casada?
Yes.
Ms. Carrillo?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
And Dr. Bergen?
Yes.